Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. All to order, the recreation team meeting for November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Show that. So, Mr. Reynolds were in attendance in person, all good. Virtually, so I sat in instead as. Doing this, this meeting, I hope I do, I do write by, also present, Mr. Duncan, Ms. Miller. Staff members. First, first I'm going to do is.
Push the button on front.
I thought the comment is asking about the Bridgeway Station Stadium, that was the first of the twenty-fourth. As a citizen and who lived near there, I'm very concerned that first house was passed on the agenda item. It just said economic matter at Bridgeway Station. It did not say anything about it being about stadium, did not say anything about the contract, which is interesting with. I didn't know from the, the council, they actually immediately said, oh, the contract was approved, had a very specific title and full information. But as I discussed, uh, this week with a member of the council, nobody in the public could have had any idea. That that was going on because of the way you described it. I looked at all of your notes. No, even when you approved it, you didn't say what you were approving specifically, you said you're approving an economic matter. And I think what's even more egregious is that you did this while the community was suffering very occasionally. You did this while the county was a federal agency. So people would be less, have less propensity to be paying attention to what is being slipped behind the back door. In a private way that nobody knows about. Why did you do that? Why didn't you want to give one to the public? I will, we'll, we'll continue. Why does anything is important? In your own noise organs, you've actually specifically stated you can do excessive noise as a health issue. I would also say things like traffic is a health issue, right? Dr. Lennon, of the second highest MBA mentality rate in the entire country. When I learned that statistic, I was shocked, but now being here and seeing what's done, I am explaining a little bit better how that happens. I asked, when was the last traffic study done? I was told, and maybe someone can confirm, I was following a classroom study in two thousand and nineteen. Did you really approve this stadium with the last traffic study meeting up in two thousand and nineteen? I was used to be a pediatric I C nurse. I understand that when you are taking care of other people's health, you have to act to a certain standard. You cannot be negligent. I would argue that not doing a traffic sentence in two thousand and nineteen might be a form of negligence. And I think the community has a right to know that's happening, to ask questions. I'd also like to know, there are numerous studies showing that when you build a stadium, you increase added crime, you increase assault, and you increase drone driving. Has the county done, have they looked into that, or has the council, have you done tax studies to see how there's. A neighborhood right across the street, lots of low kids. What about parking? Where are ten thousand people going to park? Is that in the neighborhood? Have you, um, the time for that? Do you not say the public has a right to see that, or at least know that that's about to be implemented? And trying to think, what other questions do I have about this? Um, how have you done a study or a survey to assess the level of support? I was asked, I was told if you can make me report this, have you actually done a study for any kind of survey or such, or all in them? And the final thing I was saying, I was told on the phone that part of the reason that they didn't want any of the public to know that would compare to. Surprising when parents provide a children a Christmas. Which really took me back. Because as an American, as a very proud, proud American, who understands that the role of government for a constitutional republic at every level. Is that the government's third peak. The idea to even compare the government to a parent is just completely off the hook. And it's not how governments do work. Right? Your, your job is to look out for the community and to do the due diligence to make sure that there's no negligence happening. In terms of safety, in terms of community impact. So I, I'm already, I'm just getting done with the studies, I look forward to going through all those. And if needed, coming back and having more questions, which I'm sure I will. Uh, once I get this all information, I hope that everything has been done on the upright and I would really, um. Truly cannot believe that this was. You know, passed in way where nobody in the public had any idea was happening. Thank you.
Next is reading approval minutes. Um, starting with Washington, through the minutes, the August fifth, twenty-one. Motion, sir.
Second.
I would say the, um, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Those black signs appearing, the motion carries. Reports from, reports communications to the officers, Mr. Duncan.
Good evening, guys. A couple of things, uh, going on this month, uh, the red department. We've got. Science basketball, we're extending another week. Four. Five hundred kids in our basketball program will also be hosting, uh, football, uh, the SCAP. That we, by sixteen to the twenty-third, also soccer tournament this month, the Sunset Park, uh, the SCAP as well. Basketball Jamboree, December thirteenth, fourteenth, Friday and Saturday. Let's review the Gambia, it's a thirty minute play. That's for picture day, but that will be a big day for us as well. Sports Center, we've got some things going on there, we're selling gift certificates for Christmas, uh, you might lose it, Sports Center. Uh, also, we'll be about, uh, some of the activities that the. Sports Center in the chamber putting up, we're trying to put some sports in January. Also, the staff working on, I'm gonna give two of our. Two, yeah, brochures on our. So if you see that you're, I can have a sixteen today, one from membership, so. First time cleaning that up. Can get, okay, something that. Appreciate you saying, bringing my attention, um, you know, we're just trying to reduce that down to three or four. Can't staff work. It's hard for the city to compare. We're unique, we're the ones to this, I don't really say it has facility like that. Apparently with the Y in this town, I believe St. Andrews, and had some center kind of similar to what we have, and so. We're trying to compare those, we've got it done. Set, look at it and just see if that's the right direction we need to go. Yeah, so we're just trying to clean that up. If you can see, all the ones that we have, which we have isn't pretty much. That's, I would say sixty percent of my membership, obviously. That we, that we, um. Also, uh, Savior Center, uh. Got, uh, Matthew got booted from the. Building got damaged when they ran into the wall, they got all, we got situation. We will probably start that, talk Matthew day, probably sometime, then later in November or December, and. Get that on, so it, 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 she hit pretty good. It's pretty damn, that picks, uh, open up the year. Also, I want to thank, uh, with his assistant director. Uh, this voting, uh, we had voted in senior center, he was there Saturday, I think it was about thirty. They picked up all of those, uh, he stayed, I do with it, I still have a window this weekend, the meeting, but. At Sunset Park, and he was there pretty much every morning and every night, making sure they got it locked up. At one point, yeah, just got to talk to the mayor, and said, mayor says I was barking today. A lot better, cause it was just, he was gonna say, well, I'm focused, so, which is a good thing. But I just want to commend staff at senior center as well, and all the staff, because we do things that sometimes people don't see. We do things that, I'm not, I'm not being, I'm sure, but. That's what we've been, that we see. You see, with, the fact of the world, how that building, we know, and Addison, we know. Working here, so I was going, packing them on the back, and you see, and. Appreciate you did sign.
Mr. Crayling, Mr. Crayling, I may have had two this meeting, was I passed him out of the senior center about nine fifteen, thirty, Saturday, and sold. Really out there, locking it up, helping, taking. Let's just out, so, it was a neat thing to see that your, your staff is there, well past hours, you know. And no one knows it's getting done, so, actually, I had not called you in, I'm gonna mention that in the meeting tonight. Second thing on, uh, just some. Prayers for you and your staff on, one of the things that I care very deeply about is using the fields that we have available. The Craylon did a good job this fall, trying to get it, you know, from the ball fields, get travel terms, we're based on fields, and we've talked about it over. When people are on those fields, you experienced it, when you played two or three games in a day, the first thing you do, you know, on this side, first pass, there's much fun. Pull down the, whatever, so, my first. But, but our goal is certainly with those fields to have them turning right and forward. Also, Mr. Craylon, this fall, and then I'm expecting, having the same kind of push, so, I was trying to somebody. Appreciate, appreciate you.
Well, thank you, we were trying to do. Most traction, what a burger, I, so, you're right about that, so, but thank you.
We have one of the fun ones on our table, yeah. The senior center, I'm sorry, the sports center, uh, could you come in to, you know, I've been there probably three months. Um, what's the general feedback?
Uh, great. The stair cleaner, it, yeah, yeah, seven. Can do again, twice. They, uh, it's been a great response, folks, you know, and it's also improved our number, we keep on increasing that. Revenue is up in regression due to the rounds, and revenue is difficult to build. Out of target with the, with this four centers, starting new shares as well. We so stop pushing, we gotta keep pushing, and, uh, get that thing, one day being self-sufficient, and we're, we're at it. Trying to do our best.
Thanks, Craylon. That's all I understand, thank you.
Good. So, you said, are we hosting the football tournaments here?
We are.
In that three weekend, or?
Yes, one soccer, two football, district and. Sub-district and the district, soccer will be the district.
That's awesome.
I said, um, so, like, you had to go wrong, you, I believe, so this is how you kind of draw us sometimes, so, sorry.
Um, we have other questions, thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
On to unfinished business, have none, new business, none as well. Second portion of public comments.
Okay, I did one on that, I'm sorry, I was on, didn't miss the board grant. The board grant out of the board. The fence and. Reselling the ball control. They pick the children. Trash cans, we're also, um, I met a set last week. We have some part money that we can contribute towards, um, the damage of the stage, of the storm, we will try to get more. I, I believe it's roughly seventy-six thousand, I think that's what we said, and since we're on. Three teams, straight this time. I don't need. It's interesting, so, okay, this is messing me with things with the state, and you, and I can't imagine anything, but.
Awesome.
So, yes, sir. Now, I've got, I've got, I've got, I've seen those seven, I'll get that.
So, unfinished business, new business on public, can I say, public comment?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, sound?
Next committee meeting's going to be public safety.
All right, I'll call the second committee meeting, public safety to order, um, it's November fourth. Six seventeen P M, present or myself, Mr. Krailing, and Mr. Allgood is joining us, um, via Zoom. Hello, Mr. Allgood.
Hello.
All right, um, the next item on the agenda would be public comment. See, no public comment, none online. All right, we'll move on to the reading and approval of minutes from our August fifth meeting.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Allgood, any corrections in the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes from August the fifth, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to reports from our city officers, we have, um, Chief Mccone up front, uh, up first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of committee, we'll give you a quick update on a few items, uh. Contacted unique with our Q R Vs, and they are, got all the emergency lights in, they're just waiting on some of the striping to come in, so he said, any, any time now, they should be complete with those. Uh, we had fire prevention month for last month, and we seen over a thousand kids and multiple adults, and it, Ember, the dog, was a huge, huge success. And, which I know, I don't know if y'all was aware of the badge versus badge that went on.
No, tell me about that.
He actually got the bragging rights over it, so, for P D, but it was vets, helping vets, I just want to make sure I get that in there. But that's all I had to report.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Mccone? All right, um, we'll let P D tell their side of the story as they come up next, they say it's on next year, so we'll see, congratulations. And it was good to see Ember in the news, um, last week, that was pretty awesome. All right, we're gonna have a little break in between the chiefs and have our clerk of court, Judge Drede.
That's right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee, um, I don't have too much this evening, I like to think in court, no news is good news if things are going. Budget's on target for this time of year, um, it is set off debt time, so, um, our debt has been released to the state for processing and collection, so we just keep up on that after the letters we sent out. Um, anything that we get in before they actually go through, um, for tax collection. Um, and the last thing is, um, as you know, we had started back the issuance of commitments and bench warrants, um, in municipal court a while back, um, that's been pretty steady. We've seen an increase in arrests on that, um, between P D and the other agencies. So, um, that has been, uh, pretty active lately, um, but I have been working with the trial judges just to make sure. That, um, they're up to date on all the laws administratively, they know what's going on, making sure that all the defendant rights are covered.
All right, perfect. Any questions, Mr. Allgood, Mr. Krailing? All right, I keep looking at Mr. Reynolds, and I'm like, he's not on this committee. Thank you, we appreciate it. Chief Miller.
And, Mr. Krailing, Mr. Allgood. Uh, first of all, I'm gonna take the high road and congratulate the fire department on winning the badge versus badge. Uh, we were a little off this year, but we'll, we'll be better next year. Uh, first, I'd like to say that, uh, we. We're in the process of getting quotes on the mobile command center, uh, we've got seventeen, and we'll be proposing those pretty soon. Uh, we got five vehicles for the new year, uh, they just delivered this past week, so they'll be hitting the road pretty soon, as soon as all the equipment's ordered and put in them. Uh, just an update on the traffic team, since July thirtieth, when they were, uh, they started, we, they've written a hundred forty-five tickets, three hundred and twenty-nine mornings, and eighty-three collision, and worth eighty-three collision reports. With the traffic team being in, uh, in force like they are, it allows the road patrol to spend more time on calls with the victims and do property checks, they are, they're still answering, uh. Accidents, uh, calls, and also, they're out stopping cars for speeding, but predominantly, that's, that's taking a burden off of them, so that they can focus on dealing with victims. Uh, one other thing, I haven't been able to publicly say anything since the hurricane, but, uh, there's a couple of people I'd like to acknowledge, mainly, the whole city. As a whole, the, all the departments, all the department heads did a fantastic job working together. One in particular, or two in particular, was, uh, Kristy Vickers, uh, was our victim advocate. Uh, she looked at the victims and employees as, she looked at the residents' employees as victims of this disaster and went in active, uh, advocate mode. She, along with Mr. Duncan, made sure that all the employees were fed for a week, and, uh, for lunch and supper. Should arrive in the morning before daylight and be leaving at nine, nine, ten o'clock at night, making sure everything is taken care of and getting ready for the next day. Uh, and like I say, Mr. Duncan, he's just a.
Rock star.
Yes, taking, taking things like. Us having to worry about feeding the people, so we can get out there and do, do what, uh, we do, and they were, they were taking care of our, our people, they did a great job. I have, y'all have any questions?
I just echo that, and we've discussed it in several meetings, but when you have leadership at the top, then it flows down pretty successfully, and, um. Yeah, thank you for recognizing Ms. Um, Vickers, she's got a, um. Fireman over there, she's got, not that one, but, as a husband, she's got a tough role at home, but I watched her, um, that whole first week, and she was incredible. And just, and, and that's just her personality, that's what she does anyway, like, um, with a smile on her face, and just doing what needed to be done, so. We thank her, thank all of y'all. And for, for those who don't know, the, um, the badge to badge competition was Saturdays a week ago, right? And it was, um, the first annual, so, um, one of our business owners here in Malden is a huge advocate for vets and does a lot of fundraising efforts on their behalf. And this was, um, again, the first annual event that she had our P D against our firemen, and they had various events from push-ups and just different strength type. Um, I was out of town, so I was unable to attend, but, um, yeah, it was a lot of fun had by all, but. Fire is very proud that they prevailed over P D, and P D says, watch out. We're coming on strong in, um, in twenty twenty-five. And y'all are going first, from what I understand.
We're gonna make sure they alternate.
There's a lot of controversy about the rulings, but we'll, we'll just leave that right there. Thanks, Chief. Did y'all have, anybody have any questions for Chief? Y'all good? Okay, thank you. All right, we have no unfinished business and no new business tonight, so that'll lead us to our last public comment. Hearing none, seeing none, um, committee concerns. Not you, Michael. All right, hearing none, what do I have on adjournment?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Allgood, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, we stand adjourned at six twenty-five. Mr. Mattney?
That's why I'm up here.
Thank you, Ms. King, gonna go ahead and call E P D to, to order at six twenty-six P M here on the fourth of November, um, everybody's here who needs to be here, that takes us to our first public comment period. Hearing none, what do we hear on the reading and approval of minutes?
Move to accept as recorded.
Motion from Mr. Steinbach.
Second.
Second from Mr. Krailing, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Reports communications from city officers, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, have, uh, several for everyone tonight. So first, as part of the city's F Y twenty-four twenty-five budget, council authorized the purchase installation of additional Christmas lights for the city. And a potential drive-by light display along City Center Drive. In reviewing several different options and the costs associated with each, staff is planning to create a holiday walking trail on the grounds of the Malden Cultural Center. Installation will begin after Veterans Day, and will feature all kinds of ground displays, photo opportunities, and fun themed experiences for visitors of all ages. We do not have a go-live date just yet, but we'll be getting word out, uh, online, social media, and other methods as well. If well received, we hope to expand the holiday walking trail in years ahead. Uh, as far as city center goes, Duke Energy began installing utility poles on the north side of Jenkins Street the week before last, thus marking the beginning of the utility relocation part of the city center, streetscaping project. Relocation of utilities is necessary to remove pole conflicts that have stalled the streetscaping project for some time. Once the utilities are relocated and the pole users are removed, that's Duke Spectrum and A T and T, the poles will be removed and work can resume for stormwater tie-ins at two seventy-six. Once the storm waters, uh, lines are set, Co-Transco will be able to resume road and street improvements very shortly thereafter. Additionally, Tennessee and Wyoming Railroad Signals Installer reached out to the city with a timeline for signal installation. Installer will be in the city the first part of December to install signals at Murray Drive Crossing near Green Street, once complete, and after the holidays, installer will return and, in January, to install the signals at Jenkins Street. In preparation for the new signals, Co-Transco will be completing the approach ramps to the crossings before Christmas. If the weather remains favorable and no major issues are encountered, it's quite possible for the streetscaping project, utility relocation, and railroad crossing will all be completed by February. Lastly, four-town home pads are active in the vertical phase next to Maverick Yards, with more pads expected to be poured in the weeks ahead. Construction is moving along quickly, and the first C O, or certificate of occupancy, should be issued by late January. Uh, Metro, a couple, um, upcoming dates, uh, some exciting things, so first off, Metro connects, uh, will be hosting a groundbreaking ceremony on January eighth, oh, excuse, not January. November eighteenth at eleven A M for their new campus at the corner of West Butler Road and Conestry Road in the great city of Malden. Council should have received an invite to the groundbreaking ceremony today, and can RSVP, and we're excited to share in their celebration for the city. And then, of course, we can't leave out all the fun things happening at the cultural center. Sweeney Todd is set to open this Thursday at the Malden Cultural Center, an infamous tale, Sweeney Todd, an unjust exiled barber returns to the nineteenth century London to seek his vengeance against a judge who framed him. So we've got quite a few showings over the next three weeks, uh, the kickoff this Thursday at seven thirty P M, show dates and times are available online. Uh, do want to, uh, acknowledge that this show deals with mature themes and displays of violence, and is recommended for age thirteen plus. The Johnny Depp version is fantastic, so if you see. Johnny Depp version is fantastic, so if you've seen that, it won't be quite Johnny Depp version, but it's gonna be a great show, so excited about that. Of course, we always do a annual Veterans Day ceremony at 11:00 AM on Veterans Day, so we've got that coming up, and we're excited about that, so ask everyone in the community to come out. A Merry Malden Christmas has been scheduled for December 5th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. That is our annual tree lighting and market celebration at the cultural center. We ask that everyone join the city and the Greater Malden Chamber of Commerce for a very, a Merry Malden Christmas. This year's festivities will include live holiday music, a holiday market, pictures of Santa, train rides, annual tree lighting, and a lot of extra great fun as well. And of course, two days later, on Saturday, December 7th, is our annual Christmas parade. This year's theme is Merry and Bright, and presented by Roar FM. To secure your spot, you can go and use a form online to be in the parade. Due to pending construction on East Butler Road, the parade route has been changed starting this year. The new route will begin at the Golden Strip Career Center, travel down Holland Road, and terminate at Bridgeway Station. And of course, no holiday season would be complete without the Malden City Singers. They're gonna present Sounds of the Season, and tickets will be on sale later, or next week. They have three show dates, or two show days, three show times, so December, Friday, December 13th, and Saturday, December 14th. More information online. Of course, still directed by the wonderful Pam Mayfield, and we invite everyone out to enjoy the holiday spirit and festivities. This is a not-too-miss event, so make sure you get your tickets, because tickets will go fast. And that completes my report for EPD, sir.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Duncan while we let him catch his breath? All right, thank you, Mr. Duncan. We have no unfinished business, we have no new business, but we can take the second public comment period. We don't have any, do we have committee concerns? That leaves us with one more item to take care of.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and we are adjourned.
I'm gonna go ahead and call this Finance and Policy Committee meeting to order, November 4th, the time is 6:32. Members present are myself, Michael Reynolds, Ms. Carol King, and Mr. Taft Matney, all in chambers. Mr. Duncan, Ms. Miller, as well as our Finance Director, Ms. Abercrombie, and Mr. Mark Putnam are in chambers as well. Thank you all for being here. First item we have is gonna be public comment. This time period is dedicated to items that are on the agenda and need to be limited to three to five minutes. It's not a question and answer period, it's a time for public comment to council concerning matters on the agenda. Do I have any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, next item is gonna be reading and approval of minutes, these are for the minutes dated September 3rd, 2024.
Motion to approve, that's submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Care is unanimous. Next item's gonna be reports and communications from city officers. First up is Mr. Duncan. Thank you, sir, this'll be a little bit shorter than the last one. So first, I wanna welcome Greg Saxton, has joined the leadership staff at the city of Malden as the city's first Assistant City Administrator. And it's his first day, so he's getting a full, long day in, for his first day, so we're excited to have him aboard in this new role. Greg will serve as the day-to-day operations manager, working with various departments to ensure the success of our daily activities. Greg has already jumped in with both feet, and we look forward to his success in his new role. Welcome aboard. The other two updates, real quick, one, election day is tomorrow, so be sure to go out and vote. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM across Palmetto State. And if you did not vote early, which about 45% of registered South Carolina voters did, then come out and vote tomorrow. And the last thing I wanted to mention was the strategic plan. We are still working with a consultant, we've got some updates, minor updates, and some tweaking to do on it, but we were planning for a workshop on December 2nd. We kicked that down the road from tonight, because there was still some last-minute tweaks we wanted before preparing that, that first kind of rough final draft for council, and to get council's feedback, so that will be a special call meeting following committees' meetings next month. So that's my update, sir. Mr. Duncan? Any questions for Mr. Duncan? For better or worse, the senior senator had never been so busy than it was in the last few weeks. Exciting time. Next up is Ms., well, first, Mr. Saxton, thank you, I'm glad you're here, we're all very excited. And I remember in the, sitting in the interview, we asked the question of what he was most concerned about, and he said, learning by fire hose. So I'm pretty confident you're gonna get it, but we appreciate you being here, and we're excited to have you on board. Next item's gonna be Ms. Abercrombie, Finance Director, for your monthly report.
Good evening, committee. I don't have anything but a couple of updates. Budgets look good, minus one extenuating circumstance that we all went through, and we will keep you updated on where we stand with all of that. But I want to make committee aware that the audit is nearing a close, and they will present it at the council meeting in November. And then, you know, infant stages of the budget's starting, so that's all I have. Have any questions?
Good. Any questions for Ms. Abercrombie? I have none, thank you, Ms. Abercrombie. Last item's gonna be Mr. Mark Putnam, our HR Director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and committee. I wanna report that the city went through open enrollment last week, and the HR staff today went through any employees that were either on vacation or leave, we got them done today, and so the city is done with open enrollment. I wanna say thank you to all the department heads, them and their staff kept employees on time and arriving just when they should, and that helped everything go smooth, so really a big thank you to them. Would like for you to mark your calendars, not just committee, but also council. We'll have our Thanksgiving breakfast Wednesday, November 20th, at 8:00 AM out of 10:00 PM, and 10:00 AM, that was gonna be a long breakfast. We'll have it at the cultural center, and we'll have the Waffle House, we'll actually be catering that for us. And then, Christmas lunch will be Wednesday, December 18th, starting at 11:30 and go to about 12:30, and Holy Smoke will be doing that for us, so we'll have a barbecue there. That's, that's it for HR.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Putnam. Any questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, thank you. Okay, next item we have is gonna be unfinished business, we have none. Next item's gonna be new business, to which we're addressing an ordinance for 1047, ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of a not exceeding $4.25 million taxable accommodations tax and hospitality tax revenue bond. This is gonna be located in your packet, pages 5 through 18. What do I hear? Would you like to comment, Mr. Duncan? Yes, sir. So tonight, we have before us ordinance 1047, which is an ordinance providing for the issuance of sale not exceeding 4.25 million for an HNA fund bond, revenue bond. So in October, October 2024, city council approved a development agreement with Greenville Pro Soccer, Center Place LLC, and Bridgeway Owners Association that would ensure the development of a stadium at Bridgeway Station as a condition of the agreement in general, and to necessitate the transfer of property from Center Place LLC to the city. The city must commit to the city obligation, which is a $4 million support into the project. This commitment will be made in the way of a revenue bond derived from hospitality accommodations tax revenue. The city seeks to issue an HNA tax bond, revenue bond, in the amount of 4.250 million for the construction of the stadium at Bridgeway Station. If approved by council, the bond would set as follows. Principal amount not to exceed 4.25 million. Project is described in the acquisition, destruction, renovation, installation, and equipping of a multipurpose entertainment venue, which would be utilized to host a variety of entertainment, sporting events. General, third is that it's federally taxable, not exceeding 6.5% interest rate. The maturity date is no later than 12/31/2045, so a 20-year period, and allows for negotiated sale with a bank or competitive sale at our option. Council would still remain, retain some flexibility, and could shorten the bond term to 15 years if it desires. The bond would be limited to only deferring the cost of the acquisition, construction, things I just mentioned for the stadium. The bond is grossed up to 4.25 million to cover the cost of financing and development agreement attorney fees, and should net the city obligation of $4 million. In addition to that, the ordinance and the exhibits were prepared by Brad Love, which is the city's bond attorney. The fiscal impact is that we have currently won outstanding HNA revenue bond with a balance of just under 2.4 million for the Gateway Pedestrian Bridge. This bond is up to 4.25 million, and if I said 4.4, I said 2.4, is what I meant earlier. Would support the construction of the stadium at Bridgeway Station. The HNA fund has the ability to repay the bond with available unaudited fund balance of 2.9 million and a planned contribution of fund balance in this year's budget of $504,000. HNA revenues continue to come in stronger year over year, and with additional build-out of Bridgeway and other growing commercial areas, we anticipate revenues to remain strong for the foreseeable future. Staff is recommending city council approval on the bond issuance.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we forward the ordinance to full council with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Matney, I have a motion to forward to full council with a recommendation of approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? I'll have one quick item, Mr. Duncan, explain to me on a hospitality and accommodations tax. That money can't be used for what, or it can only be used for what purposes? So hospitality and accommodations tax money, though, are similar fashion in what they can be spent for. It's, it's six defined elements, and one of them is physical tourism attractions, coliseums, aquatic centers, visitor centers, things like that. The difference between the two is that accommodations tax, you can also do workforce housing with it, but there's a long list of requirements for you to do that. Beach rent nourishment is on both lists, which, that's not really something that we would be doing. Marketing for tourism-related facilities and events and things like that. And then, more specifically, of course, the infrastructure improvements, like, you could also do it with like road improvements, you could do stormwater improvements, you could do traffic improvements, things like that. In this case, we are looking at just doing the physical facility itself with, with this, this bond issuance, and with the difference between the hospitality tax and accommodations taxes, that they're both tourism-driven, however, the accommodations tax piece is driven to generate overnight stays, so that focus and emphasis is on folks who are coming from 50 miles further out and beyond. And again, the idea is creating those overnight stays in our market or in our city. And so that's kind of just a general brief overview of the two. And so, since we have both of those taxes, tax fund or taxed items- Both of them in place. In place, and going into a, a single fund that is in management by council, that's how we'll repay the bond. And we, this basically sets up the vehicle for the bond, it doesn't actually issue any debt at this time, but what it does, it, one, fulfills our requirement per the agreement to set this in place, and two, is that as we work with our financial advisors, we will identify the most opportu, the best opportunity available to us in the lending market to, to take advantage of financial flexibility with regards to repayment terms, and also our length of period, length of borrow, and the interest rates and things like that. So there will be a future touch point after the, if council approves the bond prior to us settling on how we're gonna do this, so that way council gets additional touch point before the issuance is, is done. Sure, okay. So clarification, we are, we are bonding a tax that we already have in place. Correct, yes. For the applied purpose. Yes. Very good, thank you, Mr. Duncan. All right, that's my only question, any other discussion on this item? Scrolling, sorry. All right. All those in favor of forwarding this to full council with a recommendation of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, mic sign, care is unanimous. Next item's gonna be public comment. Yes, ma'am.
You're asking about the $4 million bond. So you're agreeing that you're gonna put more stress in traffic on the roads in a situation that's probably not already great, right? Does everyone agree with that, that the roads around that area, that there tends to be some congestion that needs some help?
So, Ms. Brock, this item, this period's a time for you to come forward and state your concerns to council, and it's not a Q and A, it's not a back-
Okay, all right, they'll make it a rhetorical question then. So rhetorically then, because there's not really a good plan or the finances to make improvements that are already needed, and then you're gonna give $4 million to support an entrepreneurial endeavor, that's obviously gonna put more stress in the roads, and potentially is gonna put stress on the interstate. I mean, you think about if you have, you know, a game or whatever, now that I think many people are gonna come to the games, because it's, if you look at statistically attendance for minor league soccer, it's not really very great. But if you have people coming, you're gonna put more stress in the roads, and particularly the interstate. So has the city worked with the, I assume that the South, the state of South Carolina would have jurisdiction over the interstate, and I'm wondering what plans have been made to accommodate any traffic that could potentially back up on the interstate, which could potentially make the interstate more dangerous. I think about even when Malden High School has a game, I know sometimes the traffic is all the way back to, almost to pass Bridgeway Station. So I think it's very, I, it's not hard to believe that if there were, for example, 10,000 people coming into Bridgway Station for a music concert or something, that potentially then you're having traffic back up to the interstate, and then you're also building those townhomes right off the interstate as well. So I'm just struggling to understand how that's all gonna work out in a way that's safe for the community. And then, it makes me also then understand what's the, the rush then to give $4 million to make the problem worse without first having a solution, or at least fixing the problems you already have. I'm just struggling to understand how that's, A, safe, because ultimately, that's really the primary concern, is safety, and B, how that really is impact, is gonna, benefits the community. If people can't drive safely in their own community, well, that's a net loss for everyone. So I'm just struggling to see how all that adds up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brock, for your questions and comments. Okay, next item I have is gonna be committee concerns. Hearing and seeing none, that leaves one item.
Move adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a second, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
Time is 6:48, next meeting is? Building and Codes.
There's, good. All right, call to order. Building and Codes Committee, November 4th, 2024. Mr. Matney in the house, Mr. Allgood, the electronic signals, and Mr. Duncan, and aforementioned various and sundry people. All right, move on to our first time of public comment. None, 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 all right, reading and approval minutes.
Move, they'll be approved or submitted.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion, none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Sign, hearing none, they're approved. Reports, communications, city officer, Mr. Dearhog. See you, sir.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, committee members. Let's give you a brief update for activity going on in the Business and Development Services Department. We've seen our new home permits rebound this last month. That comes on the heels of a couple of new subdivisions that are beginning to build homes in their communities. This includes Adams Glen, which is a new community along Ashmore Road, which, in which D.R. Horton is building the homes there. They will have, in that community, up to 273 detached single-family homes. Prices of homes in that neighborhood are projected to start around $350,000, and D.R. Horton is marketing that community as featuring America's Smart Home. Homes will feature hands-free communication, remoteless key, key, remote, keyless entry- Homes will feature hands-free communication, remoteless key, key, remote, keyless entry, SkyBell video doorbell and more. And home construction has also begun in the Hollyview Community, which is located along Holly Ridge Court. That community will include eighty five attached, single family homes. They are being built by Cothran Homes with prices beginning in the high two hundred thousands. I do want to also give some kudos to our building inspectors. They have been working a lot with our building contractors to improve our inspection pass rates, and we have steadily continued to see that go up month after month for the last few months. So we're grateful for the job they are doing with the contractors. And lastly, another new restaurant has opened at Bridgway Station, Restaurant Rocco. Board into their website, this restaurant offers a sophisticated dining experience with which features handcrafted pasta dishes and impeccably prepared steak and seafood selections and more. That's my report for you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for Mr. Deerhog? Hearing done. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Right, unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have an ordinance to rezone two acre portion of the property located at Fowler Circle. Assuming that's you again.
I'll take it away and introduce this item. This is a rezoning request for about two acres located along Fowler Circle. This is a portion of a property that's right on the corner of Fowler and West Butler Road. You may recognize this property is where the Goodwill trailer has sit for some time in the city of Malden. But the portion of that property we're talking about tonight is the back part of that property. That backs up to the Sunset, I'm sorry, the Sunview Townhomes. And the reason, or what they're requesting to rezone this is from C one, which is a commercial district to RM, which is residential district. The intent of the applicant is to develop this property for attached, single family homes. There is one update to your report that you've received on this item. The owner is has switched up the partner that they are working with to develop this property instead of the Parker Group. It will be I'll make sure that I read the right name, Red Oak Development as the developer partner for this project. But Red Oak is essentially looking at doing the development and as consistent way has been, as has been presented by the Parker Development Group. This project, let me back up. They held a neighborhood meeting before submitting the application to rezone this property back in September. The meeting was advertised in accordance with city requirements. The only attendings at that meeting were the development team, property owner, real estate team, one of our city elected officials and one of our members of city staff. There were no other members of the public that attended that meeting. The planning commission held a public hearing on this. It was a week or two ago on October twenty second. And there was one public comment offered at that hearing, Ms. Cindy Jordan. At two oh four Fowler Circle, county resident expressed her opposition to the development of this property. She shared concerns about traffic safety and speeding along Fowler Circle. There were no other public comments that were offered at that meeting, and there were no other members of the public that attended that meeting. While the planning commission deliberated over this item at their hearing, most of their discussion was focused on the comments that Ms. Jordan brought up. And they talked about traffic, asked a lot of questions about it. Staff gave them some information about traffic as relating to how it's being proposed to be developed using the generation, traffic generation rates that are published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Project consisting of about thirty townhomes generating the range of thirteen to twenty one peak hour trips, depending on whether they're for rent or for sale. And for the city of Malden, for a townhome development project, a traffic study will only be required if the project is projected to generate at least a hundred peak hour trips. So this project would fall well below that threshold. For comparison's sake, too, we talked about whether the, what the traffic would be generated for this project if it remained as commercial versus being rezoned to residential. And you'll see in your packet or your report that I gave you some typical developments that we might see in a commercial property at this location of this size. And in all cases, those regular type commercial development exceed, or I should say, generate more traffic than what we would associate with this town thirty unit, roughly thirty unit townhome community. But Fowler Circle is listed as a tier three roadway, safety and congestion relief project in the one percent sales tax referendum that's currently on the ballot. We will hopefully learn more about whether that will be approved in the coming days. And at the end of their meeting, the planning commission voted four to one, recommend approval of the rezoning with Mr. Danchism dissenting. And as they discussed and as part of the recommendation, the members of the planning commission also commented that they would be very interested in seeing improvements made to the intersection of West Butler Road and Fowler Circle. Been in contact since with the traffic engineer that the broker is working with for that site. And and that's something they're going to study as part of the traffic study that they will do for the commercial development of that property. And finally, staff's finding on this is that the project is entirely consistent with the comprehensive plan was, which designates this property for multifamily residential development. The proposed development of these two acres will be a very positive transition between the existing Sunview Townhomes and the allowed commercial development on the remnant of this tract. Finally, with the intent of the applicant to develop an interconnected pedestrian oriented design in concert with the commercial development expected along the front of this track. Staffs, or we find that what they're proposing supports the city's vision for development. So based on these findings, staff supports the approval of this rezoning, and that is the report that I have for you.
Thank you, sir. Questions, Mr. Deerhog? Mr. Allgood?
Thank you. Thank you again for serving Chair of Recreation during that committee meeting for me and my, since I cannot be there in person today. I do have a few questions. The the first piece is at the neighborhood meeting, this is now, I think, the second neighborhood meeting that we've had in a row where there hasn't been public that has shown up. The last time, I I believe the concern was the distance of where the location was from the point of emphasis of the property versus where the meeting was held. I don't really have that concern here, but it's just the fact that we've had now two where we haven't had public comment, where I know that historically we usually have pretty good crowds from folks who are nearby. So I was just curious, I'm not suggesting we didn't follow processes or procedures, but do you have any insights on terms of why we still have little public comment?
So let me just comment real briefly on how that's advertised. There is a sign, a regular yard sign that's put out on the property that says that there is a proposed development on the site and that there's an informational meeting for that. And it will list the date, the time and the place of that meeting. In addition to that, the applicant also mails out a letter to all property owners within two hundred feet of that property. Now generally, when they do that, they also provide their contact information. And so anyone who does is not able to attend the meeting, or if they just would rather call up the applicant instead of attending a meeting, they're invited to do so. So it is entirely possible that when they put out those letters, instead of attending meetings, some of the residents who receive those are just calling up the developer to ask their questions and and talk about it that way. But outside of that, I I don't know that I have any other additional insight as to whether, why neighbors around a property are not attending the meetings that are being advertised.
Okay, thank you. I just, I I appreciate the 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 feedback. And and the only other thing that crossed my mind was these last two were held outside of like a public facility, but we've had them in private facilities before, and they've been very well attended at churches and the like. So I don't really have a good explanation. I was just curious. The couple other questions that I have on this is the 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 one dissenting vote that we had from the planning commission, did that individual give any reason for the dissent? Or was it just a dissent with no reason?
The comments that he made during that deliberation primarily were focused on the fact that he lives in the community on the across the street on Butler Road in Laurel Meadows. And he commented that he is not a proponent of adding any traffic to that area. And so that's really the only thing I could guesstimate as to what he used as his basis for his vote.
Okay, thank you. And then when it comes to the, you you mentioned that it's no longer the Parker Group, it's another developer. Is the developer there tonight?
He is.
Okay. I would love to get some thoughts in terms of the the buffer around the property. I can see the image on page ten where it kind of shows how everything's laid out. I'd love to know, like, what is the, do we, is it, are we maintaining the minimum twenty five feet? Are we going a little bit beyond that? And then also with the property that still butts up against Butler, that is not currently being called for development now. Do we have any thoughts on what that still could be? I assume it's still going to be commercial.
I'm turning a looking at the development group or team that's here and and seeing if one of them want to address that briefly, but I'm going to turn the mic over to one of them.
Perfect, thank you.
Brad Skelton, I'm the owner of Red Oak Developers. The buffer is set at twenty five feet, which typically when we see in other municipalities is 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 a little above standard. We usually at fifteen feet, so I think City Malden has covered their bases there with a substantial buffer. The site plan that we were presented by the Collet, Collet Group, we're happy with. Our builders typically start in a little bit higher range, you know, we're we're not a developer that does a lot of the lower end stuff, so we'll bring a a nice builder into this project. It's only thirty lots, so I don't, I don't foresee any traffic issues or anything like that. But the buffer substantial in our, in our line of work.
And then, at this point, do you have any insight on the front property on future use? My, the reason why I'm asking this question is the the property that you're talking about is two acres. If I were to look at this map and just make a guess, the other piece of property is also two acres, give or take. So I'm I'm curious, does that limit the ability for additional commercial use down the line? Or are we going to eventually be rezoning that for additional townhomes down the line?
Yeah. My name is Bill Runge with Collet. To answer your question, the two acre intent for the front corner would be commercial use only. We have explored different scenarios within the C one zoning that both would complement the size and scope of the property. The highest and best use for that frontage on West Butler would yield itself to the current zoning. It's why I think we all looked at a potential mixed use development that would encompass rear use compatible with an RM zoning and while we're here to request that rezoning of that back half of the property.
And will there, with, do you envision having any kind of privacy fencing or is it all tree, tree? I was going to say tree fencing, but that's not a word. A tree buffer between the the properties that we have here?
It it will be a combination of, I think, vegetative buffering per the ordinance now to separate the C one with the RM. I mean, again, the the orientation and design of the commercial property is going to be focused up on West Butler Road. And so the interior of that two acres more than likely will have room with within itself to buffer between the the vertical improvements and the rear property line separating the two acres from the front two acre.
So looking at the two acres compared to the existing townhomes that are, or yeah, the townhomes that are behind the property, what do you plan for any kind of transition there?
At this point in time, outside of just the current code requirements, I don't have a specific detail on how we would separate the or buffer the transition. Because I don't, we we don't have a a a final plan in place for the vertical development of the front two acres as of today's date.
Sure.
So I guess what I'm saying is that it would be contingent upon that, but in compliance with code. But it would depend on civil design and engineering that accounts for the development ultimately decided on that front two acres running West Butler.
Right. So my, my, my final comments and 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 Chairman, I will turn it back over to you, is while I know that you had mentioned that, hey, Malden has an ordinance that is a little bit more stringent than others, fifteen versus twenty five. I still always look for available green space and available additional setbacks if we can go beyond twenty five. I am for it because that also provides greater opportunity for drainage and issues like that between you and your neighbors, which are those townhomes behind you. From a density standpoint, you're looking at thirty. I understand we're going vertical to three stories. I was just kind of counting the best I could, what I could see behind you. We're looking more like twenty five on about a similar plot. So again, I understand you might be able to have, be able to fit a few more units on a smaller piece of property. But again, giving any kind of considerations and amenities that we could add that helps with green space, with drainage, with not impeding on neighbors, that's, it's always a good thing. So just feedback for if this thing does proceed and goes to to council, any additional thoughts and feedback that you can take from this conversation and others that you have received, even privately with the citizens. As Mr. Deerhog mentioned, there might be some comments that you have received that were not part of that public meeting. Implementing and just listening to the residents is very much appreciated. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, sir. Chairman, do we need a motion before we go ahead and start talking about this as a committee?
Seth, do we?
We do, yes. And then then I would go ahead for the sake of discussion and move that we forward this to full council. Mr. Allgood, while while you're here, would you feel more comfortable? Because I don't want it to move forward, you know, with with you being away, you having some things that you would like to see. We've had a sudden change of developer. Would you like to hold, have us hold this in committee? Until perhaps we get a more fleshed out view from the new development partner that's taking this property before we look at moving it forward? Would you feel more comfortable with that?
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. I I I would, just because I think, as you just pointed out, we have a brand new developer and there may be things that they would like to implement that were not part of Parker Design, who was the previous developer. So I appreciate that.
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion and move that we hold this in committee until Mr. Allgood returns and he can have some discussions with the new development team about what he would like to see before we move it forward. So the motion is to hold in committee, correct?
I would second that.
Any other comments? Dustin, I have a few just that I wanted to 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 provide as well. If I understood correctly, what was stated is we, there will potentially be some sort of traffic study when the commercial part of this lot is developed. Is that what I understood? Lot is developed. Is that what I understood?
Yes, we, we have hired, uh, a tri- a private, uh, third party group to conduct a TIA for that intersection. As we speak, I mean, it's already been commissioned.
So is there a timetable for that?
Four weeks.
What, do we have any idea what the proposed sale price is going to be of these homes? Do you have any, do you, the range we're looking at for these?
I literally just came aboard this week, so I haven't had time to do comps on this yet, but. You know, it is a good location, you know, it's a good location.
Yeah, I mean, and, and I think the only other thing to me, uh, again, is as someone who's had the distinct. Pleasure of you, if you will, of having to wait at that light. For eons, um, when, you know, when we're done with, uh, you know, a ballgame or something at Sunset Park. I, I mean, I do have concerns about the ability to get out of there. It's already. I understand. I'm glad it's, it's, it. This zoning will actually make it. Less impactful and that's good. Um, but it ain't great to begin with. Um, that's my concern there as well, but, um, I, I think obviously just to share my, my thoughts. Since it sounds like we're going to hold in committee for now and then, and hopefully get a little better understanding what, what exactly we're looking at. That's all I have.
Project, I think it would be to just give them some more time.
Sure. All right. All discussion, hearing none. So the motion is to, to hold in committee. Is that correct? Good. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed like sign, hearing none. Got that handled. All right. Moving on, public comment, section two. Yes, ma'am.
I had a comment to Mr. Reynolds, your comment, uh, hearing all the opportunity that the neighborhood is having. For input and to ask questions for 30 townhomes. You at the last meeting made a comment that this is not a Q and A. I just wanted to state, well, there never really was an opportunity for a Q and A or to ask any of these questions. About how the stadium and the contract you approved is going to impact the health and safety. Of the community. So where else are people supposed to ask questions? And I would also just remind you that it was never put on the agenda in a way that anyone in the public would know it was even being discussed. So no one would know to ask questions. So perhaps if there had been some transparency into what was being discussed and maybe an opportunity for some. Feedback from the community, I wouldn't have to bring up questions on the record here at a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. More public comment on the line. We're good. Committee concerns? Well, here on adjournment, so moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Was like sign. We are done 7:13. Final committee is Public Works. I'll order the, uh, Public Works Committee meeting for November 4th. It is 7:15. That would be, uh, Mr. Reynolds and Ms. King. See if we start public comment. Then online. All right, move on. Um, reading an approval of minutes. What do I hear?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve as submitted.
I'll second it.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Knows like sign? Let's have it. All right. Reports to, uh, reports are communications from city officers. Mr. Fleeman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it's been a while since I seen you guys. Um, last month has been a lot of brush pickup. Done more than in the history of Malden. Uh, currently we've, since the storm started, we have done, uh. Just short of 500 knuckle boom loads. Uh, it's equivalent of about a little over four million pounds. Debris, storm itself. Um, and that was just our efforts. As you know, we, we do have a third party contractor that's been working with us. Last meeting, they said they, they were around nine million pounds. Just the scope and breadth of this cleanup is, I don't think anyone anticipated. We have completed for the zones four, one, and we're finishing zone two right now. We have most of zone three, with the exception of Oak Park completed. So the intention is probably by the end of next week that we have completed one full cycle through the city so that every resident has at least been served. We've been doing social media updates. We've, we've been dealing with issues as they arise. We've had a number of trees on the sewer right of ways. The sewer guy spent weeks just clearing trees on the right of ways. Even helping ReWalk clear, clear some of theirs, uh, at the parks. We've, we've cleared trees for the walking trails, David Bates. It's everywhere. Uh, but. There's a light at the end of the tunnel. Um, I was working with sanitation today. We're really thinking. You know, if we really stick to it, we've been doing weekends, long days. Um, we might. Might. Beginning of the year be done. And just back to normal. Which would be nice. Uh, we did, uh, put the newest knuckle boom on the road. We got it right before, uh, we actually, we got it, uh. Last week of October, if you came to the trunk retreat. Uh, we had the, the new knuckle boom set up as our display for the trunk retreat. We did win first prize. For Public Works. Um, but we, we've been putting out every knuckle boom we have every day, uh, and getting everything we can. So that's where we are on the brush pickup. As far as everything else goes. All the other divisions, parks, maintaining the fields, getting everything ready for Barton, all the games, um, sanitation. Uh, this was the second highest, um, volume of trash in the history of Malden this, like this past month. You know, as we grow, there's more people, there's more trash. Um, with everything that's going on with the debris pickup, just pointing out what, what the services that we've been doing, there has been no loss in service from Public Works. We've been able to maintain. That peak level of service, all the parks looking good. Dishes are still getting dug, trees are getting cut up and removed. Daily trash pickups, un, uninterrupted. So. Uh, hats off to those guys. They've been working hard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look through your packet on your weekly update. Uh, Mr. Fleeman provided in there some of the tonnage breakdown, the daily tonnage breakdown. It's astounding. I mean. 80 tons, 66 tons, 73 tons, 66 tons. It's an astounding amount of debris that they're removing. And I think to follow that up, I think one of the things we, we breezed over and didn't sincerely appreciate is the flexibility that staff had to go outside of the box. And bring an outside company in to help with that. Um, and we may have started that trend. Some of the other cities followed suit not long after we started.
Yep.
But that kind of flexibility, um, both within our budget and within our. Way of doing things. I think attributed to how quickly you were able to get roads clear, um, get roads safer, all of those things. So just. Just genuinely appreciate, uh, all the extra effort put in there, but those numbers are. Astounding.
Well, it's luckily, we, we, we do have a, a certain level of cross-training in the department, so. I've been running the knuckle boom. I have different people from di- different divisions that if say, just. Couple of people from sanitation call out, we can still fill the trucks with other staff members. And so we've been able to maintain and just keep pushing forward.
Well, I wanted to compliment you as well as to get any of the, uh, third parties. We, we beat everybody. I'm not sure that that's a fact, but that's the way it feels. That, uh, we're getting stuff out of our neighborhoods faster than a lot of the other places, just because I think you guys.
Yep, and, and, um, I got an, an email today from the DOT. Stuff was copied on it. They do have contractors in place, uh, all the original agreements that, you know, the city executed with them are still good. They can't give us an exact date of when they're going to be in the area, but they will be coming in and they will be looking at city roads and DOT roads and assisting us in the brush pickup. Uh, it's within this 90 day window. It's us, a third party DOT, but it will get done.
Very good. You guys are doing outstanding.
And if you have free time, you should come to Taylor's where I live and you can see that, you know. If you go to Taylor's Elementary, where we have to vote tomorrow. Uh, it looks like a bomb went off and it looks exactly the same today as it did the day after the storm. So.
That's right. That's some of where I'm getting, I think you guys are on it before anybody else.
Yeah, so it's, the, the residents of Malden certainly have been provided a great service.
Thank you.
Absolutely correct. I mean, you drive around the county and you see just huge tree trunks on the side of the road and. Even some of the narrower roads that are, you know, I mean. Roads that are less traveled by myself and I'm not familiar with, I'm like, wow. Um, and it does make you realize that we have a tremendous team here. So as always, please tell your crew, thank you. It has not gone unnoticed.
Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to throw a couple of other things out there on the debris pickup. Um, one. Um, yes, some of where DOT has been, um, struggling is that their contractor. Took a better offer and left the state, so they had to back up and punt and find a new contractor. So that's been some of the issues there, but, uh, Brandon's doing a good job. Uh, at DOT to kind of get that re-engaged and, uh, so we appreciate what he's doing there. When it comes to the city's contractor, we have begun to migrate from our emergency response operations to our standard debris pickup process. And so they are going to be unwinding their services, um, as we move back over, uh, into our normal standard operations. Uh, but with that, we have seen our, um, our cost for storm debris pickup continue to climb. Uh, council initially authorized, uh, $500,000 in ARPA funding. For that, we will be bringing the request to, uh, council at the commit, uh, the council meeting. For an increase of ARPA spending to 750,000 to cover the majority of our, our costs there. We have submitted our FEMA application, but have not been approved yet. It's still spent, uh, it's still, uh, suspended in the pending. Uh, we're supplying information to the county, uh, with regards to our debris issues and our debris pickup. To help them in their application and their process with FEMA. Um, so we don't have any greater clarity today as to where and when FEMA will actually be, again, um, accepting our reimbursement requests. Um, however, we do know that the general fund, um, appropriation for debris pickup and sanitation. Was set at over 600,000 this year and without additional appropriations, um, for ARPA to cover the storm related costs. Uh, we know that we're going to exceed that additional 600,000. So, uh, Ms. Amber Crombie, uh, and, and Matthew, myself looked at the mon- numbers today. Uh, we do have identified an extra 250,000 in ARPA that we can dedicate towards this. Um, and that way we're not pledging general fund, um, fund balance to this operation without any clear guidance from. Or when FEMA will reimburse the city or its cleanup costs. Um, so we feel like, uh, we didn't want to put that on the agenda and until we had some more answers. And so that's why it didn't make tonight's agenda. But we will put it on the committee of the whole agenda for, um, two weeks from tonight. Um, Matthew, you want to cover anything else on that?
I reached out to EMD today. The response on the email that you and I got, still waiting to hear.
Okay, so we hope to have more information by then, but we feel like u- utilizing that ARPA funding that we have. Is a better option than committing on, uh, uh, fund balance this time.
And on that, um, one of pet peeve of mine is all the people saying FEMA cleanup is going great.
I haven't seen them.
You answered an email yet? Um, yeah, the, just so everybody's aware, the, the city's done this. It isn't FEMA. And we met, we're hoping to get our, our refund to the extent, correct?
That it, that's it.
So it is not a FEMA clean up, cleanup?
I haven't seen a single FEMA. The worst national, uh, natural disaster in this area's history in the last. 50 years. I haven't seen a single one. Every bit of remediation effort has been by city employees or contractors.
Talking to a Duke Power person too. They also stated that they had some wind numbers. Showed it as a category two. It's not official. We took a, we took a whopping. All right, with that, any other questions? Again, great job. Thank you. All right, moving on, unfinished business. Uh, there's none. New ordinances, sale of property on East Butler Road.
Uh, build a better Butler. So. Uh, we, this is the final, uh, right of way acquisition by the DOT for the Build a Better Butler project. If you're familiar, Build a Better Butler project is going to be the repaving of Butler Road from 276 to, uh, corn. It's going to include a 10 foot, five, 10 foot wide walking trail on the north side. It's going to be part of the, the extensive trail network we're working on. Um, and it's going to fix all those potholes. Um, in order to accommodate for utility relocation, the DOT has been acquiring property, expanding their right of way so that utilities can be relocated. This, what you have in front of you is track one, and what we're looking for tonight is a positive recommendation to council. To go ahead and, and get the, the mayor to sign the, the commitment and, uh, for the. The sale and the temporary easement. Uh, what it pulls down to is that the right of way on track one and track one is, is just over here adjacent to us at Bohemian Bowl. Ultimately, they're looking to gain 17 feet from the existing right of way to the new right of way. And what that's going to do is allow them to install a, a right turn lane only. Uh, on, uh. Heading west on Butler at the intersection of 276, that will allow you to turn north on 276. Dedicated turn lane. So, um, they've gone ahead and, and they did, uh. You know, just with all the other property acquisitions, they had an appraiser come in. They looked at everything. Uh, they identified, um. What kind of, uh, cost to cure, what kind of, you know, what's the property worth? One, what's it going to cost to relocate everything that's in there? And then justify, uh, a, a, a purchase price from us. And so for the fee simple title, they're looking, the, the compensation is listed in below on, in the, in the table and staff and the analysis. It comes to a sum of $189,000. So basically the financial impact is we'll get $189,000. Uh, we will have to work with Greenville Water during the project to relocate, um. Uh, one storm water vault. Typically, Greenville Water is going to do it anyways. Um, and then we'll have to get a variance from the business development office to allow that the Bohemian Bowl sign to remain in place. Other than that. We'll lose some hardscaping and potentially some parking. And the recommendation from Public Works is to move forward and recommend to city council to approve, uh, the sale of these properties. For that CDOT.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to forward a full council with a recommendation of approval, the sale of property. And to provide the temporary right of way to SC DOT in the amount of 189,750 dollars. Um, and this is for track one, Maverick Station.
I have a motion. A second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Those to full council. All right, next, public comment. All right, committee concerns? What do I hear about adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 You are adjourned. You are adjourned. You ready?
My little gal. I will call to order the special call city council meeting on Monday, November the fourth, twenty twenty-four at approximately seven thirty-one P M. Let the records reflect that all members of council are either in attendance or via Zoom. Mr. Allgood is uh, because of a unannounced business trip, had to be out of town. So uh he is attending via Zoom, so we appreciate his attendance here tonight. So we had to do, uh, the only item before us tonight, it was a uh item to come before committee of the host's pleasure of council or a motion to enter an executive session to consider a personnel manner regarding the city administrator's annual evaluation is allowed by state statute section thirty dash four, day seventy A one, most of pleasure council.
I moved.
Second.
Okay, every motion from Mr. Reynolds and a second from Mr. Allgood, Steenback, I did it again, the bearded ones confused me. We got it, we're okay there, uh. Of course, I should have said via the informal method, so we're good, that's the only item on the table anyway. So, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, uh, as previously mentioned, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So that was unanimous, so there's, couldn't be any dissenting votes. So we will move into executive session upstairs in the small conference room, if you didn't mind, it's seven thirty-three.
Mr. Frank, can you hear us, sir?
Yes, sir. All good? Rock and roll. All right, we have reconvened in the council chambers coming out of uh executive session. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, you'd like to report out?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, reporting out of executive session at nine twelve, no decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Next item on our agenda would be, did I say what time we're coming out, nine?
I did.
Uh, possible action items discussed in executive session? Hearing none, uh, council request? Hearing none, what was council's pleasure on the adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Reynolds and a second by the esteemed bearded one, Mr. Steenback? Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 We stand adjourned at seven, nine, nine thirteen. Thanks, Michael.